I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Theresa Payton Roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Right in the middle. Oh, sorry. She's asking me questions. I don't know if I paid attention. Kill.
Here.
O'Hara. Waller here.
Here.
James.
Here.
And Brendeman and Mattson are absent with notice.
All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda or a motion to approve?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? We have a motion to approve the meetings minutes from the 117 meeting. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? No bills or I already did what you handed me? Speed forward here. Public comments? Anybody that would like to make a public comment on anything that is not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Have at it.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Hannah Biese. I'm treasurer for the St. Center, and this is Lois Kaiser. She's our current president. So we just want to update you a little bit on the current activities since we've had this sale of the Gage House.
You're right.
So first of all, we want to thank the city of Hartford and the Hartford Downtown Hartford area in development for helping purchase the Gage House. We really believe it helped us to move forward and not have to worry about maintenance of the building and that then we could kind of pursue the things that we like to do to help aid the community and the seniors and the community of Hartford. So right now, our purpose is still being able to provide the space for the meals, the in-house and delivery of them. At this time, a wooden nickel and crooks cooks the meals, delivers them to Hartford, and then they get packaged up and delivered and served to the people who are coming. We average maybe about four meals a day between the delivery and the in-house. So it takes a lot of volunteers to accomplish this each month, probably. I was asking Lois. Today only figured about 25. So that's really the hardest thing is getting the volunteers to help us. So and then we have something new that we're really proud of, and we wanted you to really be the first official announcement of what we have put together. So from the sale of the Gage House and along with some donations and fundraisers that we've been saving, we partnered with Sioux Falls area community foundation, and we opened a Hartford senior citizens endowment scholarship fund. So this will enable two West Central seniors, each $1,000 scholarship, to attend any two- or four-year continuing education facility. We've been working with West Central, and the first scholarship should be available this year. So to go out in March and I think back in mid-April and be awarded in May. And this will be a forever option for the students and students from the senior citizens of Hartford. So one of the things we really like about this is that anyone can donate to this fund. And so it's as simple as just logging on to the Sioux Falls area community development webpage and making a donation. And you get a letter. It's all tax deductible. So all of the money you have in your shoeboxes, you now know what you can do with it. We're here to serve you.
Excited to come.
Yeah. So and it really, it will forever help the community. We're just really excited and proud that we've been able to do this. We're going to get the word out as many places as we can so that people will know this scholarship's available this year. So that's one of the reasons that we're here, so that you all know and can spread the word. We've been working with Amy, and so we're going to have a little piece in the messenger. We'll be in there. And of course, the counselors at West Central are helping us to write the application yet at this point to get that completed. This fund is currently set up and ready to go, so we're ready. We're ready to roll. We have to put a purpose on this scholarship application, and this is what we wrote. The Hartford senior citizens have established a scholarship fund for our graduating West Central seniors who will be attending any two-year or four-year institution of higher education. This fellowship was created from the sale of the Gage House in 2023. The Gage House was built in 1904 and has stood the test of time while playing an important part in Hartford history. The Hartford senior citizens would like to invest in the future of Hartford students to honor the legacy of the senior citizens that came before them. And so we hope you all are as excited as we are about this endeavor and how proud we are to be a part of it.
That's a great idea.
Do you have any questions, Lois?
Boy, Nick, I would say next summer when they start doing the farmer's market, set up a table outside your deal with the sign.
Oh, for donations?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're on it.
We're on it.
We're on it.
Not that word that they said in the state campaign, no. We're not going to stay on board here.
Do you have any questions?
And I would assume everything's going great since we've taken over.
Yep, we've got a meeting set up next week on the 16th to meet with the seniors and the library to kind of work, you know, the changes, a little bit of remodel we're going to do to kind of get a library a little more room and to kind of accommodate everyone, so.
We're going to hear from the library, and so I'm sure we're going to hear all kinds of nice things.
We're going to see if somebody has something to say about us.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, thank you, ladies. I really appreciate everything you guys do.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you all for everything you're helping us with, because it really wasn't being easy for us to know what was going to be able to continue.
Well, we needed a home for you guys, really.
Yeah.
That's what it really came down to. We really, we needed a home for you guys in the library.
Yes.
We did, so that's, that's great. Any other citizens, any other public comments? Going twice, three times, gone. We're going to move on to visitors. Stephanie Benz from the Sea Lion Library giving her annual report, and I think we have it in our packet also.
Yes, I don't know if you've had a chance to look it over, so I will make it brief. We always look at the number of visitors, the number of checkouts, and the number of card registrations. Included in the packet were the number of checkouts and the number of visitors, both on the rise. I like to, I have the news. And I think it's due to our increased programming. We're moving out of our COVID phase and getting back to business as usual and better. So we expanded our hours and offered more programs, and it worked. More people are coming by to visit the library. We have a focus on early learning development. We know how important it is to get kids ready to read by talking and playing with them and to get weekly visits into the library with the parents and the kids together. And we've been focused on that for several years, and we have made great success with that. We do a weekly storytime and a sensory storytimes, and I'm so glad they've come here tonight because they know how many people come to those. And we've been putting them out for the last few years with those, and so thank you very much because it's really important. Those seniors in high school were once little like that, and that's how we get them started. And then we also want kids in K-5 to read, so we try every summer to do a weekly program at the library. We got news, sad news, that there won't be tutoring this summer. They are not going to offer Reading Bridge, which gave children a chance to come in and read with a tutor. But we do have Leslie Wallace, the former kindergarten teacher, and kids come in and read to her. She's such a treasure. And she wanted me to mention too that not just children, but she gets a lot of travelers and visitors who are downtown, and they stop by and use the internet or to check out maps and always talk about what a great community this is. And so we just feel very invested in Hartford and hope that, we hope you're very pleased with what we offer and the services we offer. And it is quite a partnership. Thank you from the senior center for all the years they've worked with us in providing space and patience with us as we use their space for programming. Do you have any questions or comments?
I think so far it's just been, it's been great.
Since they moved over there, I know we receive calls that community really likes it, you know, that you've got your own separate space and yeah, nothing but good comments.
And I like what you do during the summer, like you're talking about the farmer's markets. They always have something going on there. That's great.
Can you join us if you can share with us?
Yeah. But that is, that's really, it's good to see you promoting as strong as you are.
Oh, thank you.
And it's great to have, Leslie's been posted on Facebook. It's always good to see all the stuff she's putting on, and that's really good.
We also hired recently Patricia Bates, who is a resident of Hartford. She specializes in early learning and preschool children. She'll be joining our storytelling team, too.
Good. That's awesome. Well, we appreciate the partnership with the library and the seniors. Loving you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You bet. All right, we have no applications, agreements, hearings, resolutions, or ordinances, so we're going to move into the points. And first up tonight is Amy. Boffler.
Sorry. I'm going to talk very less tonight than others. My information's in the packet. When I submitted the packet, we had the winners for the banquet, and I didn't want to put them in here because then everyone would know ahead of time. So our volunteer of the year award went to Mr. Mark O'Hara. So community organization of the year was the Hartford area fire and rescue, and then business of the year went to the Hartford dental clinic. And then, of course, the burger battle. Who won that? Big Jay's Roadhouse. So a different contender won this year, so we were very excited about that. There was about over 150 people in attendance at the banquet. From my understanding, I wasn't able to be there. Other than that, that's on the chamber side. HIF, we're continuing to work on different land concepts, working with different developers, infrastructure design on some concepts, and moving forward with some different things on that realm. So. Any questions?
Any questions for Amy?
Just one second. Amy. I'm going to do a marker.
Oh.
The app, your Discover Hartford app.
Yep.
How hard is it for the programmers to copy what's on the chamber to the app as it is?
I don't know if they're set up that way, because they would have to be set up for all the different chambers that they work with and different formatting. So this is their format, and we have to kind of go with what they have, and they have two options. We tried option one.
So they can't copy a business's information or the content information and stuff from the chamber and just?
With that, it comes from Google. It automatically populates from Google when I type in the name. And now we're going to be sending out an email saying if you want to update your information, it costs $100. And you can add a description. You could add phone numbers. You can add hours of operation.
So I got to pay an extra $100 for the app service to have my business?
Nope, not to the app service. It's to the chamber to provide an extra opportunity to promote your business in the community.
So can you just remove my business off the app? Because all it has is a map. It doesn't have the contact number or nothing like that.
We can add those things, but if you want to add more.
You said it was $100. I don't want to pay an extra $100 when I've already paid $200, and this is a service that the chamber offers me as a business owner.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I get it. So there's information already on our website that compiles all your information. This is an added opportunity to promote your business. We can add the phone number for free, but if there's anything else like a photo or a description or anything else, then there's a upcharge.
But you have several businesses that have a map to their residence?
Correct, because that's all Google is providing us with, unless they call me and tell me their phone number wasn't listed. That's when I make the judgment call there, and I do it with the board approval.
So improper categorizing businesses, that's Google on Zoom?
What was that?
Categorizing a business in improper category, that's?
Such as?
I'm a trucking business listed under auto.
I changed that to say auto and then trucking and transportation.
If you pull it up, where on the app, on that tab, does it say I'm a truck? I'm with all the auto repair facilities, and it shows a picture of a truck. Shows like I'm a picture of a truck shop. Has nothing to indicate that I'm a trucking business or transportation or logistics.
I can look at it, but they don't want to just put you in one area with one business, because then you're going to be singled out, and people probably won't look at it. That's their concern. So if they can group you with two or more businesses, they prefer to do it that way. But I can go and make a judgment call again and recabulate some things.
I was speaking with other business owners that deal with other farmers and stuff, and just show them my phone with the app. And it's like, can you show me the trucking business? And I was on the tab with my business. And they're like, well, no, there's nothing here that indicates trucking. This is all auto repair. I was like, okay, well. Then I went back to the homepage of the app, said, show me something that says trucking, and they go to the auto machine, trucking, transportation tab, and they're like, well, there's nothing for trucking. It just goes back to auto repair.
How much did you pay it to be on there?
Nothing.
Like $200 chamber membership, just like every other.
Everyone is free automatically out of the gate?
Yeah.
Absolutely free just for the listing.
If they're a chamber member.
Correct.
Right.
And then you get to pay it up.
I discover Hartford, it says auto, machine, trucking, transportation.
It's like on the tab.
Yeah.
Deco Holdings has just lumped in there with a picture of a truck. So it's nothing to do with trucking.
Maybe it has more to do with your name than Deco Holdings.
There's a picture of a truck next to it.
Instead of a car or a tractor or a tire.
Right.
Deco Holdings is maybe the issue, not necessarily the app.
Maybe the best bet is for you to get with Amy and talk about this and see if there's something.
I can try and reformat it to something.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's going to be a truck as a picture. I mean, what other picture would you want?
I don't find the picture being a truck as long as it's under the proper category, subcategory heading. I mean, as a chamber member, I would.
Like I said, maybe the two of you can kind of work this out. Yep. Yeah, because I don't know.
Yep.
You know, I mean, that's, that's my only concern. I mean, because of, you know, black eye components wanted to find me after they lost the park. Well, they can't because there's nothing there. I shouldn't want, oh, well, what was that truck guy here in town?
Yeah, that sounds like something that should be handled in business owners.
Yep.
I tried to, and all I got was, well, I added the trucking transportation to the tab, and that was it.
I know.
Because she didn't want us to separate you out, but if you want to be separated out, I will be more than happy to do that.
Yep, just work with Amy if you can. That'd be the easiest. All right, anything else for Amy? All right. City engineer.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, good. Good.
Good. Not too much on my report tonight. Big one, one of two things is on the water resource recovery facility. Updated the schedule for you guys there just so you have a better idea of where we're at to date. Looking to bid the project and provide that GMP set mid-April this year, not having a set date quite at this time, but that's, that's the target range. And then actually breaking around late May or June to get started on that. The surprising thing, if you'll call it that, is their tentative construction schedule. They actually are looking to have the Aramont basin installed and complete this year, as well as site grading utilities and the building footings, and then looking to complete everything at the site next year, next, in 2024. One thing up in the air still is the gravity collection system. Over that, I mean, could realistically be the last thing, because if you don't have the treatment site done, there's no reason to send the worst order there. So with that, looking, you know, well ahead of the January 1, 2026 effluents limits that are going to be changing for the city. The other thing, the one other update is on the Highway 31 water extension that we did opt-in through that act due to the SRF funding. There's, there's a bit of, we submitted to the state water plan, and then after that is approved on the state water plan, then you submit your funding application. And in order to be eligible for funding, you have to comply with a number of federal requirements that are maybe not required at the state level. You just bid it and finance it to the city. There's wage standards and AIS and all of that that we want to make sure we comply with on the plans. And then additionally, if you bid a project usually before you get funding, it looks, it appears to the funding agency that you went ahead with it, so you must have the money to do it yourself, and so there are less ads to provide that funding. So that's why we're looking to secure that SRF loan prior to actually going out and bidding it, just to.
So I have talked with Sophia Seacog about this, and like I said at the last meeting, you know, if we decide to do SRF funding, and we haven't decided that yet, the first thing we need to do is get on the state water plan, which was due at the end of January, so we need to get on that. She says, and that's what I asked her about, I said, you know, here's the timeline for our project. You know, the SRF loan applications are only submitted and reviewed quarterly. I said, we're looking to start this before that. Can we go ahead and, you know, bid it? You know, is there any rules against going ahead and bidding it and awarding the bid and moving forward? And there isn't. She says, you can do that. You know, you're just taking the risk that if you don't get that funding, you've got to find other funding or whatnot. But you know, that's the risk we're taking. There is the other caveat that it may look too old funding source, that yeah, do you really need our funding? And you know, basically, it's going to them and say, you know, we need to fund this project. You know, we're either doing with SRF funding or private funding. You know, we're going to look at the best possible choice for our citizens, you know, lower interest rates or whatnot. And she, she doesn't see a problem with getting SRF funding, because there's money out there for it. It's a loan. You got to pay it back. But she did stress you probably won't get grants with it, which I don't believe we'd probably get a grant with this type of project anyway. It's, it's not in the cards for that. So we did get on the state water plan. She did get all that submitted. So it's just not kind of deciding what we want to do for funding. If we do want to move forward with SRF funding, then there's more work ISG has got to do on their end, or if we want to look in private funding for this project. And you know, then, you know, this project is well a little under a million, about 100,000 or something or whatnot. So I mean, we can look at using some of our reserves and our water fund, because we can fund this with some water fund reserves. And we do have some money in there in doing a partial loan, which that's something we can reach out to, you know, the local bank entities and get some quotes on that. So my plan was kind of to look at that and kind of see what kind of interests they're doing and say what our different options are, and then kind of come to you guys and decide what do we want to move forward with. So I'm hoping to have some more information for you, you know, nothing to clean or so, so.
Alan. We're down south. I own backup to wastewater treatment plant. So March 2023 plans and specs are supposed to be submitted to D A N R for a third day review. And above that, it says February 3rd, where it's 60% designed nearby. So to me, does that mean we got 40% of the plans, we got to be done between now and March?
So that March deadline is generally about the 90%, where you really have it done, and then you're, you're really fine tuning, honing it in. But it gives the D A N R enough information at that 90% to where they can review it at, at the level they need to to say yea or nay on, on the items. That 60% that we, we just did, we, that's a lot of, it's not, it's not a high level. It's a, it's a medium, close level plan set. So we have a lot of the stuff worked out, and, and we're, that 60 to 90 range is really refining the plans to get them to where we're comfortable submitting to the D A N R. We have everything vetted, meshing, cohesive, being very cohesive. That's that 60. So it's not, it's, it's a lot of little things instead of a lot of little things versus a lot of big things, yeah.
It's going to be more like what type of pumps or what.
Okay.
Yes.
I was just curious, but when you look at those two numbers, you think, okay, so they got, they're 60% of the way, and they got 40% of the plans to get done by March.
Yeah.
That's why I, when I seen that yesterday, I thought, that just doesn't seem like it makes much sense to me.
This would be like finalizing the Mars pretty.
Okay, got it. I was just curious.
I just, that's why they are going to come to the next city council meeting for, you know, for the water guys.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I see the Rice Lake guys will be here.
Yep, Wayne.
Got you. Okay. All right, sorry about that.
No. Good. That's, that's all I had to update. You guys have any other questions?
I don't think so. Anybody else got any questions for the engineers? All right. Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Craig.
Snowmawler. Yeah, just going to mention, we're still plugging away on getting snow. We got those piles moving everywhere. We're starting to widen roads now, and I know it's scraping a lot. The road is trying to get them busted up and get them blocked. So working on that and be continuing as long as the weather stays nice for scraping, we'll keep scraping, getting cleaned up, looking pretty good. Otherwise, I really don't have anything else that I'm going to touch on, because I think Theresa is going to touch on a few of my things in here, but.
I see a $13,000 bill coming for our tranny deal.
Yep, yep. They, when they went to take the pan off to, because it came up as sensors were bad in it, and when they took the pan off to check the sensors, they found five things in there from the clutch. So they said it's basically, that's why it was slipping, it's basically junk. So so we bought 13, right around $13,000 or over $13,000. That's what they sent me for the estimate.
And I think you said you reminded the boys if they get stuck.
Yeah, get stuck with any of that stuff. Just slim sit until even if you're putting up there. I think that's, and that, you know, truck's got a, you know, 300,000 miles.
Yeah.
So it's probably weak to begin with, or not weak, but you know, weaker. So that's where we're at with that. Hopefully, I was trying to call them today to see where they're at. I talked to them last Thursday, and the tranny wasn't in yet. It's supposed to be getting built in Yankton, is where the place is manufactured. It'll have a two-year warranty on it.
Okay.
And he's like 50,000 miles.
But rebuilt, is that what you get there?
Yeah, it'll be rebuilt, yeah.
Who's doing that someplace in San Marcos, is that?
Yankton. Well, the company, the company that's actually doing it is Interstate's Power.
Oh, sure.
Borster, yeah, they're an official Allison dealer.
Okay, gotcha.
Repair shop, so that's where we're doing it there, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, I really don't have nothing else to report, just because I kind of put together a rough map on that. Like I said, that's all subject to change. Basically, on that, I highlighted the stock points for the bus stops, that just general idea where, and some, like on Partie, all they had on their website is there's five stops on Partie. So I just kind of guessed where they're at. But we'll work, any major slow event or anything like that, we'll make sure these areas are open up, good vision, everything like that all the time. The roads that I put in yellow are the narrow roads that we'll probably have to worry about, maybe no parking or something like that down the road, which Partie's a narrow road to begin with. That part of Mont is real narrow. And then Oaks is a narrow road, so. So those are them. Then the other ones in green are pretty much more of the main roads, just the, they're either businesses, like industrial or whatever, or main roads going through town, fire station, things like that. And then the ones we'll concentrate and keep them as wide as we can, so.
I think the biggest thing that I've heard from people is the corners.
Yeah, yeah. And we've got some new people helping us clean intersections, and they've been told to don't pilot in intersections, take it down, push it up somewhere else. So we'll keep working on that, guys, to make sure next event that there's a problem there is. Any questions with that or anything about other of my report?
That makes sense. And you talked with Coke. Everything seems okay with them, with the school, with the buses, picking kids up? Yeah, we sure don't want to, yeah, try to stay with them, but.
Yeah, I told Rick, yeah, I told Rick, he calls me off and on anyway, but I told him, I said, if you have any issues, where, where your bus stops at, let us know, so we can take care of it.
All right. Good enough. Thanks for putting that together. That gives us a little mind.
Yeah, we'll just post one in ours, so if guys are out and want to know what, you know, what to look for, they can go get these areas, so.
Are you still hauling the snow to the sports complex?
Um, there, I'm also at the tree drop site, so.
Okay.
That's, it'd be a pretty puddle up there.
Oh, you don't kid. Like, you must have hauled it mile today.
Yeah. And it's been slow going because we're down a truck, so that doesn't help. And then we usually get your normal daily stuff, so one or two guys are running after that, and then we're just trying to work all this stuff in when you get time. We're hoping here tomorrow, but hopefully we don't have any 9/11 stroke that we can just get out and start working on this stuff, so.
Get it clean until Thursday when it snows, it'd be on nicely.
Yeah. I know, it's almost good watching.
All right, any questions for Craig? Thank you. I appreciate the update you give me on a regular basis. So Karen Wilber, Finance Officer.
My information's in the packet. With the end of the year, I did do a comparison, expenses and revenues from last year to this year. Revenues were up more, but so were expenses. So I kind of highlighted some items that were kind of out of the ordinary, just so if you guys were wondering what the differences were. So that information's in the packet, if you have any questions on that. Other than that, you know, I do have one action. Other than that, you know, I do have one action item to appoint the election workers, should we happen to have an election. I have contacted Laurel Stringer to do Ward 1, Darla Lawver in Ward 2, and Ori Renshaw Ward 3, and Gail Blocker has a theory to bear alternate, should one of those gals not be able to show up on election day, so, I just have a motion to.
So I have an action by the council on that request.
I'm making a motion to approve the election workers for 2023?
One second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote Wosshager. Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes. About the $30,000 for cannabis licensing fees, I thought we'd only approve two of the three.
It is, in the revenue, the difference in revenue?
Yeah, I don't know, and Miss Alina's, for February of '17, top of the page, $30,000 in cannabis licensing fees.
They came in in February, or January, and then.
We have two, I thought we only had two.
We did, we have the, the grower, and then Unit 2 Road renewed.
Right, and then we have Dakota Cannabis already paid, didn't they?
I'd have to look at the detail on that, the cannabis manufacturing and the cultivation one, right? They didn't pay for all three of the licenses, their dispensary though, was up for renewal, they gave a check, they were just holding on, probably.
Oh, okay, so we had one then?
Yeah.
Because they, we can't really, I mean, yeah, I can see if we hold it, but, because we haven't approved their license yet, we cash the check.
I'll double check, but.
That's just something I jumped on, can you let us know on that?
Yeah, I'll check.
I had two in my head for something.
Yeah.
And Unit 2 Road and Grow Farms came through.
Right, that's the two we've approved.
The Dakota Cannabis, their dispensary one was due, and they were going to renew it, but then they just kind of put it on hold, because we said, well, you can't renew it because you haven't even been functioning, you know, and they said, well, they're just going to wait until they, and do all three of them when they're ready to go this year, but they don't plan to do it, but they just wanted to put it on hold and wait, but.
Somebody just gave us.
I'll double check.
Somebody just gave us a bunch.
It's one of the things here that transmission.
Sure, we'll take that.
Thank you. All right, anything else, Karen, anybody got any other questions for Karen?
No questions.
All right. Thanks, Teresa.
As well, my report is in the packet for you, a couple things I want to point out, Craig and I did meet yesterday with the property owner to talk about the bike trail between fighter and main, and we, you know, we need an easement from the north, the new property owner on the northeast side, she seems receptive to it, she did have a couple concerns, one of the things, probably her biggest thing, is that she worries about people walking along there, they don't have their dog leash, and we do have a leash law, there's supposed to be a leash, but you know, she sees them not leash, and so she's got some dogs, she's just worried about, you know, people's dogs getting up into her yard with her dogs or whatnot, so she did discuss, you know, is it possible to put a fence in there, you know, maybe to kind of have a barrier, that's not going to work, I talked to Mike, because it's in the floodplain, so that is, so, you know, to get out of the floodplain, we need even a bigger easement, like a 20-foot, so we're going to get back ahold of her and tell, you know, the fencing, isn't going to be possible unless we get a larger easement, I don't know should, before that, maybe, we initially talked, Craig brought it up, you know, we could put some signage, you know, reminding people the leash law, you know, maybe put some signage out there, but you know, this is private property or whatnot, and see if she felt comfortable with that, or maybe put a few bushes in there, because you can space those out in the floodplain and probably not impact it, so maybe there's a few other things we can do that would, you know, be acceptable to her. We kind of told her that, like I said, we just met with her, you know, on Monday, you know, we'd like to probably have an answer, either yes or no from her by the next council meeting, because we'd like to give ISG, you know, a clear scope of, yeah, this is going to work, or no, we've got to go another route, and then they've got to revise their plans, and you know, we've got to do something this year, so, she said, yeah, she would let us, get back to us within the next couple weeks, so hopefully we'll know something by the next council meeting, and still try to work something out with her, so. Kind of pointed that out to you, talked about the wastewater plant, just an FYI for you, I'm not going to be in the office the next couple days, tomorrow and the next day, because I'm going to peer for the city managers' meeting, don't look surprised, you know, so, I will be out Thursday, Friday, but I'll be back in, I'll be out Wednesday and Thursday, but I'll be back in the office on Friday for you. And I just wanted to make mention, I did have a meeting last week with representatives from DSU about doing their cybersecurity analysis, and that's pretty, I'm much on the go, they're going to do it mid-March, they're not going to give us exact dates, because they're going to try to trick us, some of us employees, to see how good we do or whatnot, but that'll be mid-March, and.
How the DSU people are.
Yeah, yeah, so we're in the process of working that as well.
I got a question.
Yep.
The Stockwell Project Night Street, when are we going to get that off here? What's going on?
So basically, what they have is they've got two items, basically, they've got to cut off a couple of water pipes, they're both water pipes, or curb stops that they have, that are, basically curb stops are sticking out of the ground a little bit, they've got to cut them down so they're flush with the ground, they've been like that, we have been on a constantly.
Are we still holding money on there, my hope?
It's a punchless item, so no, not, like I said, we've talked several times, it's just Zacharize, and I, I think he'll get it done, he just, you know, he was busy all through the summer with our six-month street project, then winter came, and the snow's come, and now we can't find them, so, yes, I still have that on my radar, that we'll be right on them again this spring, I can, it, it's a pretty quick fix, so.
He told us, he gave a date even one time, that, we'll get them done on Friday, and didn't get them.
Okay, which Friday? Let's see if we can get that.
We'll keep on.
Let's see if we can get that done.
Yeah, I was really pushing him to get it done by the end of the year, because I want to get off the books.
Exactly.
Exactly, I don't want to.
And we're holding no money on it, so that's.
No, because they're punchless items, so, yes, we'll keep working on that.
Mr. Mayor, one thing for Teresa, I've had a number of people mention that your staff was concerned of phone calls that they received after water bills went out and surcharges, and a lot of upset people, and a lot of very rude people, is that a fair statement?
It's a very fair statement, yeah, yeah, I mean, there is a lot of them just calling questions and just, you know, weren't aware this going up, and you know, obviously we answer the questions, we, we had some very rude calls, yep.
I just, I just want to make the statement that I'm 100% in favor of water treatment plans, so that's not why I'm bringing it up.
Okay.
Why I'm bringing it up is, we've got all these people that are calling and being rude to staff and everything else about it, and I don't see a single person at this council meeting tonight.
Right.
Exactly.
I want to make that comment made in a public setting.
Thank you. I thought, I did too, I expected that we were going to have some people there.
Yeah, I kind of forewarned you guys, because I, I know they probably get hold of you too, but, yes, our, everyone must got their bill on Friday, because our Friday was a constant, Monday was pretty constant, it's kind of slacking off a little more today, so we're hoping the work's good.
Yeah, I would assume that the staff, you were saying to them, you know, we're here, I mean, this is what it is, but if you're concerned, you need to come to the council meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we've said, you know, this is the discussion's gone on for two years, you know, watch the agendas, you know, certainly can, you know, raise your opinions, and, yep, definitely, we're giving the whole spiel, we got, we got a lot.
Staff is aware that you guys don't need to, if people are rude and cussing at you, hang up on them.
Yep, yep.
We went through this last summer, when people were yelling about the dog park, we're not going to stand for that.
Yep, Jen had one that was.
Not going to stand for that.
That I heard.
They want to yell at people, give them my number, because I can hang up on them too.
No, Jen had one that's pretty bad, and all the way through the year, and I heard it, and it was after that, I said, you know, you don't need to listen, or name calling or whatnot, they can call back when they're calmer, and we'd be happy to talk to them then, but.
I will say, I was with a pile of our Hartford business owners and residents right tonight at the Chamber banquet, and believe me, I had several ask me some very pointed questions about our $26,000 deal, so I had a lot of, gave me a great chance to have a lot of good conversations with them, and tell them what was going on, and usually when I got to the end and I said, so, the alternative is, we won't be able to flush our toilets in about three years, is that, are you okay with that? That usually kind of changes their mind just a little, so.
A lot of them were just questions, and when you explain it to them, they're, they're good with it, but.
I get it.
There's, yeah.
Us fixed income guys.
That doesn't work for me anymore.
It used to work. All right, thank you, Tony, for bringing that up, that is a great, that is a great point, all right, anything else for Teresa? All right, we're going to move down old business, we have update on Summit Carpet Pipeline that Teresa keeps adding into the packet, so it's public record. I will make one comment, after I read the County Planning Commission's minutes, I reached out to the gentleman from Valley Springs who loves to call me, Rick Bowden, great guy, and I said, I see your name listed in the minutes, send him a text, I said, can you give me the update, and I have not heard from him, so, I don't know if he, doesn't have anything to tell me, or, but, he's a great guy, I mean, I've had a lot of good conversations with him, but.
Yeah, basically, from what I've seen on the video and whatnot, you know, of course, they're, they, some of these landowners want the county to enact an ordinance, it's going multi-through county land, to regulate pipelines, and, and right now, all the regulations for these pipelines are coming from the federal level, you know, even the state doesn't oversee them, and so they would like some kind of county ordinance put in place to have a little more regulations, and, honey and Zoe weren't listening to their concerns or whatnot, did it take any action, so whether it will be on a future agenda or whatnot, you know, we'll keep an eye on that and see, I do know too, and you guys are probably keeping tabs on those too, they, they were up in Pierre on Monday, I think it was this week, Monday, talking with them, the legislatures up there, there's, there's several bills about this as well, the different ones, yep, that they're talking about, so whether anything gets done or passed up there, we've yet to see too, but they were up there discussing that at the state too.
I understand there was six bills, and if I heard it right, two made it through the committee.
Yeah, I think so.
Made it through committee, made it through, I heard.
Yeah, so that, yeah, they still got to go through kind of.
But it's been made known, they got a pile of lobbyists up there, some of them, so.
I didn't get to touch base with Grant Hoffman directly, but I heard my call, it sounds like only one other constituent wanted to call him regarding the pipeline, so.
I called him, but yeah, same, same buying people there, purpose, yeah.
The other update is that Summit did file with the P U C, they asked them to reconsider their hearing timeline, they will reconsider, I think they meet on the 9th here this week, I don't think they'll change it, because there's already been two discussions about it, but they did file and ask them to look at that. And then I want to let you know that me and Craig and Justin with ISG did have a phone call with Summit today to kind of discuss our future crossings, you know, just work with them as far as, you know, placement of their pipeline, the depth and whatnot, to ensure that we can get our water and sewer across and whatnot, it was a good meeting, they seemed very open to, you know, if we need to change anything, they can, we kind of went through, kind of identified, you know, looked at the crossings ISG identified, they're going to actually send, they've got pretty much, it sounds like most of the plans kind of figured out or ready, so they're going to send those pipe depths to ISG, and they're going to look at those different areas where we think we'll get crossing, and we'll see if they're, we see a potential issue, and, and they said, you know, they do have some wiggle room that they could, you know, change the depth of their pipe, higher or lower, if we see that's necessary, so ISG is going to get that information, look at that again, and we will continue to work with them to, so when they do put their pipe in, hopefully, as we expand, you know, west, we won't have any issues with, you know, the depths of their pipe and interfering with that.
You recall the day they were here, when we asked that question, we said, what happens when we need to cross above or below your pipeline? If I recall, they said, we will have people there.
Yep, I recalled that.
To monitor that.
I wrote that down.
I did too.
We'll see if they.
So, at some point, that's, we need to discuss that with them, because I'd like to.
You know, and this would be great if we can on the forefront, you know, towards a place to not get it at the correct depth, so, you know, we don't, we don't have those issues in the future, so.
And I can never remember, what is the easement, it's called a certain.
It's a non-exclusive, so.
Non-exclusive easement.
So it, it does allow you, other utilities to be entered across it there, so that, that's a good thing about it, it's not an exclusive easement, so.
If you're going to be digging around us, they're going to be there.
That's what they said?
Yeah, yeah.
You won't have, you won't have to ask them to arrive, they will be there.
That's what they said that day, and they answered very quickly, they said, oh, if you're going to be close to our pipeline, we'll have.
Oh, I'm sure they don't want anything happening there, so.
So, anyway.
So, yeah, that's, you have to, that I have to.
All right, good, thank you. All right, let's move on to new business, we need to first set the 2023 equalization meeting date, and it has to be the week of March 20th, so I kind of jotted down two dates, Teresa, either Monday the 20th, or, I think that's maybe Thursday, the 23rd?
Yeah, I guess, I put in my report, the earlier the better, just because after the meetings, Karen's got to do the minutes, and she's got to get them back to the county all in that same week too, so if we can.
That'd be two meetings in a row for the council, because.
I said, that would mean then meeting equalization on Monday, if we have it there, and then Tuesday, we have a regular council meeting, and we have it that week, regardless of when we do.
Am I right with that?
Monday the 20th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll set it on Monday the 20th, do we need a motion to that?
Yep.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make one.
Second, any discussion? Not will vote Wosshager. Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, next up, request Sioux Falls landfill passes.
Seven.
Oh, time.
Oh, yeah.
Seven bucks.
Seven, yeah. Can we add that in?
We're going to add that in.
Let's just say we're having a meeting, go tell them what time. All right, hold on, I gotta scroll through here, because what's the next date? They sent us a whole pile of stuff, what happened to the water appeal. All right, so, do we need a motion to ask for these, or?
Yeah, I like it, because then I can sign the application, get it sent into Sioux Falls.
And you've, you've always got 500, we use about somewhere between 200 and 300 and some, right?
Yep, we've been at 350 some, we've been using last couple of years.
I'll make the motion to.
Apply.
Pass.
All right, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not will vote, O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Wosshager?
Yes.
All right, now we have two regarding engagement letters, first one for our annual report with E L O CPAs and advisors.
And this is technically the same firm that's been doing our last few audits, that they have just merged with this other company, they still have the same staff on board, and they'll still be performing, same people doing our, our annual report and our audit too, so.
Okay, which one went, what, did they both go up?
So, the annual report stayed the same, and that's basically just doing our financials for us and sending that into the state, the audit is the one that went up 2500.
And I went 14,000 if I said it right, right?
Yep, yeah.
All right. Do we have any action from the council on that first one on the annual report?
Which one do you approve, the audit engagement letter, or the annual report? Yeah, let's do that one first.
All right, and second, anybody?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, well, Wosshager?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move to the second one, which is the audit, and that's the one that went up.
And then, yes, and that did go up 2500, it has gone up a little bit every year, and I have to build a little bit in, in the city's 2023 budget for increase, and it would be something, yeah.
Yeah, you're recommending approval?
I'm working on approval.
Yeah.
It's nice to have the same firms that have been doing it, they know how we operate, and it's good to have them, same with the annual report to do this, because they're then familiar with our financials.
They've been doing it, these guys have been doing it for, since I've been here, I think.
Six years, maybe, six, seven years, somewhere like that.
Six years.
You know, we're trying to expand our memory, both of us.
It's one financial. I want to throw my, my emails here on a solid.
All right, can we have?
Eight years, I had it in my report, I was going to say, I think I looked that up. Have it written in my report, if you're like, last eight years. Six, seven, eight.
Time just flies.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement letter for the audit for the.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Is this something we should ever look and see? Anybody else, or?
I mean, we can. There are a few firms that are qualified to do this, not, not every CPA firm can do municipality audits, so there's only a handful that can do them in the state, and we can look at different ones. When we, the, the prior auditor we had, he, he had been doing the state for several years, he had passed away, and at that time, we had reached out, and like I said, there's probably only a handful that do them, decided to go, at that time it was Clog, firm, and Post, decided to go with them. The caveat I would say with that is, when you change firms, it was a couple of year learning curve, I mean, it was, it, it took longer, so the more hours they put in, the more expensive it's going to be too, you know, just to learn how we do stuff and, you know, see how our accounts are set up, you know, it's a little bit of a, the first couple of years are a little rough, and they, they put in for a few more hours, and it's more of a cost, but, I mean, it's something we can look at, but.
Just, just counting.
So, there is.
Anything else?
I mean, you're certainly in a pool of fellow city administrators, and you, you have a rough idea of what this should cost, so.
Yep, yep, yep. And there's, there's probably this firm, and a couple of the, there's three of them that are probably the ones mostly used by municipalities that.
In the state?
In the state.
They probably do most of the, okay.
Yep, yep.
Good business.
It's not like being a banker or anything.
All right, anything else? All right, let's vote, O'Hara, Jazz, Keel, Waslaw. All right. Next up, review the billboard lease for Hartford Steakhouse.
This is just a renewal lease, same terms, same fee, everything has stayed the same, they would just be renewing their current lease for another three-year term.
When's the last time we increased those rates, and are those market rates?
I don't know, probably about six years ago, maybe, kind of reviewed it. I think we're below market rates, just because we were having a hard time getting a lease there for a while.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can.
So, I mean, I think we should subsidize those a bit, especially to Hartford businesses, but not at the, not at our expense, so to speak. If, if something should happen, do we have enough, are we building enough reserves to cover repairing them? Exactly, if I look at these numbers, I'm like, there's no way.
Yeah, because it's one of them, now after the windstorm, that needs.
Plywoods expensive, steel's expensive. Piece of two-inch rigid broke on one of those light fixtures, that's expensive.
Yeah, I've got a call in to get some numbers to replace that one billboard.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, we shouldn't subsidize it too much.
Right.
We're on three-year lease, so we'd have to pick a time and set it, and then as they started coming up.
And I was going to say, everyone's kind of different, so we'll have to decide when, if we can look at that.
Must get into this frame, maybe, and put that on the agenda.
It'd be good to see what it's going to cost to repair.
Yep.
Trying to give us an idea of what, how far behind we are with them.
Right.
Yeah, because what are we right now, 160 a month? So what is that?
So three years, a couple grand a year.
And that's only a two-thirds portion of a billboard, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Yeah, we want to make sure that we're, good question, Karen.
Yep, we will. Put that on a future agenda.
All right, we got any action on this, on this one?
When is their lease actually up?
So, their lease was up in November, she wasn't sure she wanted to renew, but she, since she kept it on it, she kept paying the monthly payment, and I said, well, let me know after the beginning of the year, if you do want to renew, she calls, she wants to renew, so we're starting it here this month. But she's going to pay in, the same amount every month, yeah.
So the lease is retroactive to?
We're going to start it here, so we're renew, yes.
Since she kept paying, you're going to start renewing this date?
Yep, yep.
She was waiting for us to reason.
What?
I bet she was waiting for us to increase the price.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
All right.
So, lease on the billboard? Look at whatever we.
We'll look at the pricing.
Yeah, look at for future ones.
I'll second.
Do we need to reword that though? Look at that in the spring?
I think if you do make any changes in the spring, it'll be effective for any new ones coming, yes. She'll get in on this.
So this motion really is just to approve as written?
Is, is just to say, let's, let's give it to her for three years and we'll.
Okay.
Karen, takes the price another time?
Look at any future ones.
All right. Any more discussion on that? Not, we'll vote Keel, Jazz, O'Hara, Waslaw. All right, next one up is renewal, review, approve billboard lease for transport refrigeration of South Dakota.
This is an amendment to the lease, we approved a lease for them in October, in all of our standard leases, except for the one the BP has, it provides part of the lease agreement, we provide lighting on the billboard from dusk until midnight. BP pays extra, and the council said that about a few years ago, $25 extra to get basically lighting all night long from dusk to dawn. They would like lighting, lighting all night long, it says, it'll cost you another $25. So basically, this is an amendment to their lease that'll raise it by $25 to get an extended lighting.
Motion to approve that again?
Same.
Any discussion?
Again, that's a small deal, because those are going to burn off quicker. And they're expensive to replace those lights now too.
Yep.
They can look at, as well, the policy on that, yep. Look at, look at the whole kit kaboodle with the billboard leases.
Just the frickin' photo wise on them.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? Not, we'll vote Waslaw.
Yes.
Keel, Jazz, O'Hara. All right. Last item under new business, remove, review, approve seasonal job description and new pay scale.
So Karen went through, basically the job descriptions have pretty much stayed the same, but what we did change in our summer jobs is basically the pay scale, we looked at that. And as you recall, last year, you know, we, we were pretty low, and we needed to attract summer help, lifeguards and whatnot, so last year, we, we shifted our pay scale pretty much for all of them, between the $2 and $3 range. We're bumping up another couple of dollars for each of them, hoping that we can, like I said, attract those lifeguards, so they don't go look at other summer jobs, a lifeguard and the park rec or whatnot. So, what's before you and what's in the packet is that adding an extra couple of dollars to all our summer starting pay ranges for them, and that is what we're recommending to the city council. I did build extra into our 2023 budget for this, I, when we did budget, I looked at doing this increase, so that is built into our 2023 budget.
When do we, when do we talk about fees for the pool?
We reviewed them last year, that we did that, and, and we can.
Because this would lead me to believe.
This is what we changed that.
This would lead me to believe that we need to deal with it again, really.
Yeah.
I mean, when I looked at this, my first thought was, whatever we were paying last year, we need to add 10 to 15% to whatever we're paying.
Let's, let's look at that in March then. If we're going to do something, we might get that information out to the public before, you know, when they start buying passes and whatnot, so I'd like to probably do that in the, in the next couple of meetings.
I got to have that ready, so when I go swimming, you know, I go out and go.
Yeah, I'll put it on.
Motion to approve the job descriptions as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote Jazz, O'Hara, Keel, Waslaw. All right. That being everything, I believe we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel this evening.
Arden, I just want a quick comment, I forgot to mention that this weekend, on Saturday and then next Saturday, the chamber is hosting two legislative coffees that are open to the public, starting at 10 a.m. at Stomping Grounds.
All right. This Saturday and next Saturday?
Yep, the 11th and the 18th, 10 a.m.
Coffee's provided by the chamber?
Chamber.